Good evening, and now welcome to our regular Board of Select meeting for Wednesday, June 1st, 2022. We've already done the Pledge of Allegiance, and looking on, are there any additional agenda items or consent calendar items?
Yes, we have two additional items. First is move to add Agenda Item 2I to authorize the first selectmen to sign grant applications.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously.
Okay, and the second one is move to add Agenda Item 2J, Certified Resolution, Historic Preservation Survey Grant.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. Moving on, delegations. Is there anyone that would like to address the Board of Selectmen? You indicated you wanted to speak, so, and give us your name and address, even though you've done it before. We need it again because it's a different meeting.
Yep. My name is Robert Van Corr, 107 South Beechwood Road. I have two areas I'd like to comment on. The first is on page four of the memo of the minutes or proposed meeting agenda, that one of the things is to meet with, that you met with the representatives from Dominion and Turketur, the plan, okay, that you were going to work with Dominion to get the use of the bathrooms in the old police building for the year. I don't understand why, when it's been over two years that this new police department was under construction, that planning wasn't done and a determination wasn't done as to what to do with the old police building. You had over two years for this town government to make a deal, and yet all we're doing right now is maybe use it for the bathrooms, and hopefully someone will get down to take care of the weeds before they get over two feet high. But, I mean, really, something should have been planned, brought before the town if it needed to be, and finished in over two years. That's not good. And I also like to bring a comment about the $850,000 that was for the rehabilitation and improvements of various town roads, town parking lots, and sidewalks. I hope that $850,000 includes the repair on Fairhaven Road of the bridge over the Patagansett River. That bridge has had orange barriers on both sides for well over two years. It had a bunch of flashing warning lights. Of course, they don't work anymore because the batteries died long ago, but for such a long time, to have that bridge knowingly have such defects that it's barricaded on both sides, you know, some point in time, I would hope they're going to take care of the bridge before it falls into the river. I mean, is it on the plan to fix this thing?
We can't comment on questions during delegations.
Okay, well, I would hope it's-
We can, we do have your contact information. We can reach out to you.
I would love, I would hope that something after such a long period of time has been planned to repair that bridge, and I hope there are no other bridges in such condition as the Fairhaven Road Bridge.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would wish to address the Board? And here again, we don't, we can't comment on questions. We can't respond to questions asked, but Mr. Burgos is here. If you'd like to talk to him while we're doing our meeting, that would be fine. He's right behind you, sir. So, anyway, so, anyway, approval of, moving out, approval of minutes, the public hearing and regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve the public hearing and regular meeting minutes of May 18, 2022, as submitted. Second?
Moved and seconded. Any comments? Corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. Consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of June 1st, 2022, in the amount of $4,237.15.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. Moving on, we've talked about the fact that we're going to get ready to charge a charter revision committee within the next few months, and the best place to start is to have someone who's had a lot of experience in that explain the process. So, Attorney O'Connell, the floor is yours.
All right. My handout might be familiar to some of you from the past, and it's prepared by the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. I'm going to give one to the town clerk for the letter.
Yes, you did.
Here we go. Thank you. When you go through the outline, I can verbally make some comments as I do so. It's an arduous process, and the General Assembly has made it so because it doesn't want charters to be easily amended or readily amended, and it has a statutory procedure which should be followed very closely, because if it's not followed closely, the effort of the Charter Revision Commission will go for naught because the, the, ah, the, the Charter Revision Statutes are considered to be mandatory rather than discretionary. So, I won't go through the exact words because you can read them. That's in front of you, and there are summaries of the statutory process, but we can go through step by step which is there. In East Lime over the years, steps one and step two, which is the initiation and the appointment of the Charter Revision Commission, quite often are done simultaneously, although they can be done separately. In East Lime, the appointing authority is the Board of Selectmen. It's the legislative body for matters such as this, and the appointing authority initiates a charter revision procedure. The other way that it's done is by petition of residents that are submitted, that is submitted to the appointing authority, but the Board of Selectmen may on its own initiative appoint a Charter Revision Commission, and that is by far the most usual method that's done in Connecticut. And it's done by a two-thirds vote of the entire membership, but in our case, a two-thirds vote is the same as a majority vote because it's four, four votes that has to carry. The appointment of the commission is important, and quite often, the Board of Selectmen will, will make a charge to the commission. It thinks about matters as it is considering the formation of the commission, and it thinks about matters that it wants the commission to consider. The commission, if the Board of Selectmen does make a charge to the commission, the commission must consider the matters that are contained in the charge to the commission. In addition, in Connecticut, the Charter Revision Commission can also consider matters that it brings up on its own. So, the commission may consider other items that it deems necessary or desirable, but it must consider items that are contained in the charge of the Board of Selectmen to the Charter Revision Commission. So, the Board of Selectmen would appoint the Charter Revision Commission, and also, if it wants to charge the commission with the obligation to consider various matters, that it wants the commission to consider. Also, as it does that, we would also have the Board of Selectmen take an action concerning step four. If you stop that, go down to step four, the Board, the appointing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen, prescribes a date no later than 16 months from the date that the appointment is made of the commission, by which the commission must submit its draft report to the municipal clerk, and the municipal clerk sends that right away to the, to the Board of Select, to the Board of Selectmen. So, as we, as the Board of Selectmen makes its charge and appoints the members of the Charter Revision Commission, it will also choose a date, and we'll get to the dates later, no later than 16 months, by which the commission should make a report back to the Board of Selectmen regarding its activities. So, the commission is a, is a body composed of not less than five nor more than 15 electors who are, who are registered voters, and the statute says that not more than one-third of them may hold another public office in the municipality, and there should be no more than a bare majority in the same political party. In my experience, it's also a good idea to think about appointing members that have familiarity with the way government works. But it's, it's, it's a good idea to have members of the public who are interested in, in serving on a commission, but you've got to have some people on the commission who have an idea of how the various boards and commissions interrelate with each other, and how the appropriations work, because it saves an awful lot of time, and a lot of, a lot of experience can be passed on to those who are not familiar, but if you have some people familiar with the way government works, it really helps for the business of the Charter Revision Commission. So, it's not less than five nor more than 15, with those constraints about where majority of one party or another, and not more than one-third being present municipal officials. Then the commission starts its work. It has to hold at least two public hearings, one prior to the beginning of substantive work. The substantive work would be the preparation of the commission's draft report. That would be the substantive work of the commission. So, prior to that substantive work, it would want to hear from the public about what the public thinks about what it should be doing. What, does the public in general think should be considered by the commission or not considered by the commission if it thinks everything's working well? So, that, that, that is why they want to have the public hearing prior to beginning substantive work, and then one after the commission has done its work and has completed its draft report. Then you have another public hearing. The Charter Revision Commission hears from the public about the commission's efforts and what the commission has come up with as its draft report. So, it has to hold at least two public hearings. It can hold more. It can hold more than two public hearings, and of course, it can hold many meetings in between its public hearings. Those are the public hearings that it's, that it, that it has to hold. And then we're back to step four again, and then once the commission prepares its draft report, it is submitted to the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen then has to hold at least a public hearing of its own within 45 days after receiving the commission's draft report. Now, that's important because the Board of Selectmen has some very definitive actions that it can take, and that's on the top of the second page, is step six. It can recommend, it can make recommendations back to the Charter Revision Commission, and it can confer with the Charter Revision Commission about those recommendations, and the Charter Revision Commission may or may not decide that the Board of Selectmen's recommendations are worthy of amending, making, amending its draft report. And in any event, if the commission decides what to do, it makes its final report back to the Board of Selectmen within 30 days after conferring with the Board of Selectmen, and, and then that becomes its final report. If there are no recommendations, recommended changes, the commission's report is impliedly the final report, and then the Board of Selectmen then acts upon it. And what can the Board of Selectmen do? The Board of Selectmen can either approve or reject the proposed changes. It can approve or reject the entire proposed changes or parts of it. The statute phrase is it can approve or reject the proposal or the quote "separate provisions thereof." So, if the Charter Revision Commission submits five, six, or seven various proposals, the Board of Selectmen can pick among those five, six, or seven, or either reject them in whole or approve them in whole. But if they're rejected in whole, or some of them are rejected, those, that ends those efforts of the Charter Revision Commission unless members of the public say, "We want to have those considered by the voters," and you have to have 10% of the members of the public petition, file a petition for a referendum within 45 days thereafter. As, as we just saw in our neighboring town of Waterford, it's hard to get that percentage. They, they have a threshold of 20% to take an action, to get something, action of the Board. Their RTM changed, and they could not meet their threshold, I read in the paper today. They could not meet the 20%. So, it's not an easy process to get 10% of the voters to sign that petition. Then, within 30 days, assuming that the Board of Selectmen approves, some or all of the Board of Charter Revision Commission's recommendations, the, the portion being amended, portion being amended, or the entire recommendations have to be published in full. Now, we'll talk about expense. It says the charter and the amendments shall be published in full at least once. Now, hopefully, the efforts of these Connecticut Conference of Municipalities keep, keep, they keep suggesting to the legislature that only a portion, only the portion being amended needs to be published, together with a notice that the town clerk has the entire charter on file and can be, and can send a note, a copy of the charter to anyone who wants it. But right now, it's, the statute says in full. You have to remember that. We represented a municipality to the north of us who didn't do that. They didn't publish the charter in full, and the process was ruled right then to be done. All the efforts of the Charter Revision Commission went by the wayside. They need to start all over again. So, that shows how carefully you have to follow these situations. And then we have the referendum itself, and this is getting back to where we, where we're going to start to work backwards from when we talk about the dates. The Board of Selectmen, the appointing authority, once it gets the, the recommendations, the proposals, it has to decide whether to submit them at a regular election, and at that time, you only have to have a majority of the participants in a regular election approve the proposals, and they will be good. If you want to put them, the proposals to the voters at a special election, you need a majority of the voters, and you need at least 15% of the qualified voters to vote. And again, that's a large threshold to reach. So, you would want to consider making these proposals a part of the regular election, not this year, but next year, if you want to, to get it on to the, on to the ballot of the regular election next year. So, you can, so that, if that, if you do want to consider that, that lets you work backwards from November of 2023 in assigning dates for various things to happen in this chart, and, and allowing the Charter Revision Commission sufficient time to do its work. If you wanted to do it for the November of 2022, it would be a very difficult period of time. That would be very compressed. Or if you wanted to set a special election, but then you'd be set with a 15% threshold. So, you most likely will be considering the November of 2023 election as the target date and working backwards from there. Another thing I've learned over the years is that you don't want to necessarily get too tight with that November of 2023 election because the town clerk needs the ballot, needs to prepare the ballots a certain number of days or weeks ahead of time, and those questions, if you do have a questions to have the voters vote upon for changing the ballot, changing the charter, those have to be submitted to the town clerk, to the printer, by the town clerk to the printer, by a certain date ahead of time of the election, and the town clerk usually wants to submit them to the Secretary of State also to make sure Secretary of State clears them. So, you try to aim for a month ahead of the November of 2023 election. And over the years, I've, I've thought, I've seen various items that the Charter Revision Commission will want to do. Charter Revision Commission will want to consult the minutes and the recommendations of previous Charter Revision Commissions in the town. I think the last one we had was during Mr. Formica's tenure, which was by this time, six or seven.
2008.
2008, so that's 12 years ago. What, and they, those commissions spent a lot of time pondering various issues and considering, might consider many of some of the matters that you'd be considering again. So, you'd want to find those minutes and those reports. And depending on the charges and the items chosen for review by the upcoming Charter Revision Commission, perhaps you'd want to review the charters of other towns, and perhaps their deliberations if they have recent Charter Revision Commissions, to see what they did. That task would be onerous in the past, but now it's much easier because we have the internet, and you can find charters and minutes and minutes of Charter Revision Commissions quite easily now. It used to be very onerous. You wouldn't have that source of, of information in the past. And depending on the charters and the items chosen, I've seen some Charter Revision Commissions, if there was a recent Charter Revision Commission in a neighboring town, or Charter Revision Commission that was thinking about the same issues that this Charter Revision Commission would, would think about, they would invite a representative of the Charter Revision Commission to come speak to the Charter Revision Commission about what the pros and cons were, how they thought about it, and how they pondered about it. They usually love to come and talk about that because, you know, it's a sign of respect for them, and, and they plowed the same field a year or two before, a couple of months before, and they'd love to hear, they'd love to talk about it. And also, one of the things we've, we've urged is to consult with the town attorney about legal questions as they arise rather than saving them up for the very end. It creates a big, big problem for us. And, and consult with us about drafting the report, and we have to remember that the Charter Revision Commission is an FOI commission, which requires the preparation of agendas and minutes and items such as that. So, all this means that, that really, the Board of Selectmen should find sufficient funds to, to support this endeavor. It should have a good staff person or recording secretary. That's important because you're going to have to do agendas, spade work, collating the information as it comes in. If you assign various people to do various things, and with the internet, they're going to be pouring information in. You need good staff. You need the minutes, and the reports and minutes of this Charter Revision Commission will be looked at in subsequent part, by subsequent Charter Revision Commissions. So, you need to have a, a good base for that. So, you shouldn't have the Charter Revision Commission work on a shoestring. That's what I'm saying, I think. So, that's my suggestions in my report.
Questions? And here again, this is first step. We'll talk about this more in our next meeting, more tonight, too, as well. Any questions for Mr. O'Connell, right off the bat? He gave us a lot, and I've gotten this presentation, and every time I hear it, I hear something kind of for the first time again, you know, like, oh, that's right. This is going to be a daunting task for the commission, and, you know, that's one of the reasons I thought getting it appointed and giving it a charge in either August or September meets that threshold to where, you know, that's within 15 months of the November 2023 election, and it gives us that whole, you know, summer's a hard time to get work done. This would give them from that September timeframe all the way to June, which is where you'd hope they'd be ready to give the town clerk the information that needs to go on the, and everything get done in that period, you know, during what would be called the business time of the year. But any questions for Mr. O'Connell?
Yes, I do. I believe in the last Charter Revision Commission that we had, I recall that we did have a separate clerk who was not part of the commission.
That's right.
It was a separate position. Now, we also broke into subcommittees. So, the subcommittees are also subject to FOI.
Yes, they are.
So, you could not have feasibly a general meeting and then have the subcommittees break off and do, and do their, at the same meeting, the subcommittees break off, have their discussions, and come back then to the general core. That couldn't be done because you wouldn't have a recording secretary at each of the subcommittees.
Unless the subcommittee put down a tape recorder and did it that way. They could do it that way.
And do these meetings need to be held in a public building, such as should all the meetings take place in town hall?
Oh, yes, with, with an agenda and, and pre-hearing notice, not hearing, pre-meeting notice.
And those meetings, because they're FOI-able, those meetings are open to the public?
Yes. Yeah, the public would not necessarily be entitled to, to talk at those meetings. The, the commission might, might start a practice of allowing the public to talk, but they would not be entitled to talk. They'd be entitled to view the work of the commission as it proceeds, but only at the public hearings would the public have a legal entitlement to talk. If they want to set up a delegation system, like many boards and commissions do, they might consider doing that, to hear from the public as it proceeds with its work. It would be up to the commission to do that, to decide whether or not to do that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just another observation, it's sort of along that line. So, I mean, the commission, I would think, would want to receive feedback from the public, sort of as they're working through it. The statute provides for a public hearing at the start where they receive information and concerns, but you're saying it could be discretionary on the commission to, as they get into it, to allow other opportunities for the public to express their concerns as their, it's a work in process.
Yes.
And so, there has to be feedback loops.
Yeah. I think, I would think the commission should be consistent in which way it wants to do it.
Yeah.
Instead of one meeting they hear and another meeting they don't hear, I think they want to be consistent from the start.
Thank you for the advice.
Yeah, Ed, thank you, and so forth like that, and I'm sure we'll be talking more about this in the months to come. So, this is the first step. Oh, Bill, I'm sorry.
I just had a question on your step four, on the last sentence, although the appointing authority can describe a date. I don't understand what that means. I don't understand what that means.
It says that decisions are not definitive. Is that what you're talking about?
Step four says that no later than 16 months from the appointed date, but then the last sentence, although there's an appointing authority can prescribe a date, does that mean it can be longer than 16 months? Or I don't understand what that sentence is.
Yeah, I wouldn't be guided by that last sentence very much. I think that sixteen-month date should be honored by the Charter Revision Commission because the whole purpose of the sixteen-month date is to fit in with all the other dates that we have and would be relying upon in order to reach that November of 2023 date. So I think if the commission were late by a week or two, that would be one thing. I think what they're saying there is that the, if, that the date is not mandatory, it's rather, it's discretionary. So we would not throw, it would not throw off the whole process if the, if the report by the Charter Revision Commission is late by a week, we can still proceed. I think that's what that means.
Ed, this, it sounds like what you're saying is if we, I wouldn't want to put it right out to 16 months to begin with, but if we gave a date, 14 and a half months, and they said, no, we need a couple more weeks, we could do that because it would still be less than the 16 months.
We can still do it.
Okay.
It's, I think it's discretionary, not mandatory.
And that was my question. Is that saying that it should, it could be held earlier or it could be held later? And it sounds like.
Yeah.
I don't think later, but I think.
You're getting in real trouble if you move it later because then you're running into crunch time on all your other dates.
Well, I agree. I think that last clause, decisions are not definitive. It's unclear.
It's very unclear.
If I, I think, I don't, if I can, I think what it means is, so the 16-month limitation is mandatory. Am I right on that? You can't go beyond that. But once the appointing authority establishes a date, let's say they say it's 14 months, they still have flexibility to extend it. That 14-month date doesn't become definitive. You could still extend it as long as you're within the 16 months. So it provides some flexibility. Does that sound right?
Yeah, what I'm doing while you're talking and I'm listening and also looking at the statute also. So I'm going to find 190B. 190B is pretty definitive. I think it answers our question. It says the appointing authority, which here is Board of Selectmen, shall specify by resolution when the commission shall submit its draft report, which shall not be later than 16 months from the date of its appointment. So that sounds, it's like the back part of that is getting to be pretty close to mandatory.
So this last sentence is saying is that if we pick a date that's 14 months and the commission comes back to us and says we need two extra weeks, we can authorize them anything up to 16 weeks?
Yeah, yeah. Maybe build in some slack in the beginning part, but I would not play with that. I would not play with going past that.
Nice if they come back and say, do it 14, 13 months. Okay, anything else? We'll discuss this, and here again, I think one of the things to take forward from this is when we come next to discuss it, that's when we need to, you know, talk about, you know, the composition of the number of members. You know, like I said, it's five to 15. I believe the last couple have had 11 because I've done some looking at the minutes and the information from those. And the last one got charged, I believe, in April of 2008 and reported back in March of 2009. So it did need, you know, that 11 months to get to the point where it was ready to come back to be presented at that time. So anyway, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks.
Good night. Good night.
Good night.
Any other comments on the Charter Revision? It's just that obviously, that, obviously, we need to make sure that people understand the time commitment of that. It's going to be obviously, especially once they get going, it's going to be a very busy committee and going forth. So anyway, okay, moving on.
2B.
2B, which will be emergency management and SEP grant.
Move to approve a special appropriation of the amount of $15,940 to account number 01-70-725-224-006 and SEP equipment to cover the cost of purchasing the above-listed equipment for the new EOC in-grant allocation 2022-98 and forward to the Board of Finance for action. Note, this requires a town meeting.
Okay, this is one of the things that I think we've talked about, although I've just left, is for Charter, part of the Charter Revision. This is money we're getting a grant, and as you can see with the supporting documentation, we're getting the money. And then we're just basically, we're getting it in the form of a grant, but before we can do it, we have to go through, you know, a lengthy approval process, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and then town meeting. So, you know, we have the documentation there and the chief has specified what he's going to use it for, and it's basically like a pass-through grant, you know, that we've got, I've got the letter from the state emergency management homeland security office and so forth like that. Is there any questions on it? Okay. No questions? Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded.
Oh, we need a second.
Second, yes. Is there a second? Okay, it's been seconded. Any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. The next one is bonding.
Okay. Resolve that the resolution entitled resolution making an appropriation in the amount of $850,000 for the rehabilitation of and improvements to various town roads, town parking lots and sidewalks, and authorizing the issuance of $850,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, a copy of which is attached here to and is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town at town meeting.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, it's moved and seconded. Any comments? Joe, would you like to address this? This is the one, we're talking right now, the appropriation for the 850 for various townwide projects, parking lots and sidewalks.
Joe Bergaugh, Public Works Director. We've been doing this amount of money since I've been here, the last nine years, spent it, put in the 150,000. It's working, in my opinion, if you drive around East Line, the roads we, to have a paving management plan. This is actually the last year of a five-year plan that we put together five years ago. This year, later in the season, we're going to be going through that and revamping it. But we're already trying to line up the work. We're actually going to be, we just did some paving in the Dean Road area just about a week or two. It came out really nice doing Dean Road. But there's a list of, we're doing some rubberized chip steel, we're doing some capes steel work, we're reclaiming the roads down here, Clark Street loose, Joann, Lakeview Heights, Drabik Road. So we're trying to move forward and it's the plan, the plan we've been doing. We put this stuff out to bet or state bids and stuff like that. So if you have any questions, I'd certainly like to answer them for you.
Any questions for Mr. Bergaugh? Seeing none, we'll move the motion.
I need a second, I believe. Do we have a second?
I thought we.
Do we have a second?
We had a second. Yeah, we got a second. Yeah. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously. Moving on to the Board of Education, CIP.
Resolve that the resolution entitled resolution-making appropriations aggregating $1,180,000 for various Board of Education capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of $1,180,000 bonds of the town to meet said appropriations and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, a copy of which is attached here too and is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town at town meeting.
Is there a second?
Is that it?
It's been seconded by Mrs. Hardy. And here again, the bond resolution, if the details of it does indicate, this has all been approved both at the town meeting when they improved the capital plan and then by the budget referendum. So all this has been approved, so we're just going through the final approval process where we're voting on it, then Board of Finance, and then it'll come back for a town meeting in July, so.
Would you anticipate that all of these projects would be finished within this budgetary year?
That would be a question for the Board of Education. I would assume they are, but I do not have an answer for that, Roseanne. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously.
Item 2D, special appropriation, CNRE general fund subsidy, $115,300. Move to approve a special appropriation for the following projects in CNRE Fund 32, which are consistent with the 2022-23 capital improvement plan, and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. Note, this requires a town meeting. The projects are as follows: Town projects roofs, $10,300. HVAC replacement, town-wide, $15,500. East Line Waterford motorboat, $8,500. Town projects, various, $25,000. Townwide servers, $5,000. Revaluation, $45,000. AED defibrillators, $2,000. CAD software and survey equipment, $4,000, for a total of $115,300.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Again, these are items that were voted on at, you know, the town, the annual town meeting as well as approved in the budget, so anything there? And Anne is here if we have, if there's any further questioning, so any other questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously.
Agenda item 2E, move to approve a special appropriation in the amount of $165,000 to be used as follows: $30,000 town-wide garage door repairs/replacement; $30,000 public safety building repairs and improvements; $85,000 lift jacks for highway maintenance garage; and $20,000 rebuild plant stand with the source of funds being the LoCIP program and accounts to be established titled with the state project number and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. These projects are consistent with the 2022-23 capital improvement plan, and note, this requires a town meeting.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions? These are projects that Mr. Bergaugh will be undertaking, or his department will be undertaking, so any questions for Mr. Bergaugh?
Just the rebuilding the plant stand, that's not rebuilding the dam, that's doing a study, right?
That's the study, yeah. I was going to, yeah. If we could rebuild it.
Some of that work, any kind of putting together plans, so, I mean, right, that needs a lot of work. We have to start somewhere, so that sets aside amount of money that we can get going on getting this thing ready and then having better numbers for the next budgetary process.
So my question was, does this motion want to include study of the, not the rebuild of the plant stand, but a study?
And amended to say, plan, rebuilding of plant stand study?
Yeah, feasibility, yeah, feasibility study.
Yeah, I just don't want to say that we're rebuilding the dam for $20,000.
Yeah, thanks.
Rebuilding a plant stand study.
As a bargain. We get some beavers to do it with.
Yeah, well, yeah, this can be a problem at some parts of town. Any other comments regarding that? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Moving on, the vehicle acquisition program. Go ahead.
Resolve that the resolution entitled a resolution of the town of East Line, Connecticut, authorizing the execution and delivery of an equipment lease/purchase agreement and schedules thereto for the acquisition, purchase, financing and leasing of certain equipment, a copy of which is attached here too, is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town at town meeting. We waive reading the resolution in its entirety. It has been on file with the town court.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, here again, this is all items that were approved in the, at the annual meeting and the plan and then approved, obviously, with the budget referendum. Any questions or comments? Because Mr. Bergaugh's here, he could talk to the Public Works and Parks and Record and so forth, but Board of Ed would be a little different. Any questions? If not, I'll move the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries unanimously. We're not, Sandy, and rightly so, put this in, scheduled town meeting. We'd be looking to hold, to schedule a town meeting for July 6th for these items if approved by the Board of Finance next week. So that's just there for everyone to think about that. We do have a few appointments, boards and commissions.
Sure. The first of those is move to approve Robert Currie.
Appoint.
Appoint Robert Currie, 28 Brained Road, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as a member of the pension board for the town of East Line with a term to expire on January 5th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously.
Move to appoint John Wohler to 66 Giant's Neck Road, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as a member on the pension board for the town of East Line with a term to expire on January 5th, 2026.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously.
The third of these, move to appoint Denise Hall, 23 West Lane, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as a member on the pension board for the town of East Line with a term to expire on January 8th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Miss seconded. Comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously.
And the last of these, move to appoint Beth Hogan, 10 Wildwood Drive, Niantic, Connecticut, to serve as a member of the pension board for the town of East Line with a term to expire on January 8th, 2024.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. These are all the members since we have, now have a pension board that has been made an actual board. So now we have, they're all been officially appointed. There's a meeting tomorrow, they'll all be sworn in just prior to that meeting and it'll be conducted. It used to be the board, first selectman shared that, but the thought was since they report to the Board of Selectmen, I'm just ex officio, my only job will be to call the meeting to order and then they'll elect a chair. Okay, then the items added to the agenda, we have those.
Okay, sure. Item 2I, authorize the first selectman to sign grant applications. Move that the first selectman is hereby authorized and directed to sign all grant applications and execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of East Line for fiscal year '21-22 through fiscal year '22-23, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including, but not limited to, executing and delivering all applications contemplated by such documents.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, just a correction, we're on the fourth line, things which he, that would say, I think that should say he slash C because they power away and something, and Anne had assigned it should indicate that, so, so just to make that modification. Is there a mover and second? Are we okay with that change?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously.
And the second of those, resolve that Kevin A. Siri, who is the first selectman of the town of East Line, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of the town of East Line of the Town of East Line on a certain contract with the State of Connecticut, Department of Economic and Community Development, and to affix the town seal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously. Moving on to old business, we're going to keep that there on the compost restrooms. As Dave Putnam said, he wants to visit those in July in the hot and heat to see what the conditions are at that time before he comes back to us. So, that'll be sitting down there. Ex officio reports. Start with you, Roseanne, I'm working this way.
I don't have a report this evening.
Okay, Dan.
I attended the Brookside Farm Commission, and, you know, they're, they're trying to encourage people to participate, and I think they need some members for that commission, so if there is an interest, bring it forward to the board so we can help them appoint other commission members to do that work. They're also trying to find ways to increase the interest in, in the building out there, and finding ways to use the barn that's out in the back to make it more of an attraction for the public. So they're, they're interested in doing all those things, so, yep, that's it.
Okay, Anne?
I just had a question for Dan, actually. You know, the barn that is back out there?
Yeah.
Were they using that at one point for a few weddings per year? I thought the board had approved that some time ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Up to so many weddings.
So.
As many as they want, but only alcohol three times.
Yeah, I mean, it is available, you know, to be rented out. They were talking about maybe adjusting what the fees are. They're maybe a little light on what they should be charging, so they're reevaluating what they ought to be charging for the use of it. If you look at what other venues cost, you know, if you're putting on a.
Thanks.
Yeah, presentation. But we're also thinking about, what, is there something that could be done on a periodic basis out there that might attract people to the barn? That would be a draw, so.
And the house.
And the house as well, yep. So, trying to come up with ideas, some fresh ideas.
I attended the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was Monday, May 23rd. It was a very long meeting, and I'll just highlight a couple of things. Many donations were received by Board of Education, very generous donations. One was by Lang Shores Racquet Club, which is now changing hands, and $10,000 worth of fitness equipment.
Yep.
Was, is, now will be in the hands of the high schools, so that's really great. I think their, the retreat for the Board of Education will be the end of June, graduation, as you all know, the 15. Otherwise, there was a lengthy conversation, again, my last meeting, same thing, policies, you know, reviewing the policies, the, there's a subcommittee that does that, and then presents it to the full board, and, you know, accepting policies, changing policies, deleting them, et cetera, so lengthy conversation about that. The, Jeff Newton did discuss the $500,000 reduction, and how that's worked out, and how those reductions have been made, you know, by administration, and, you know, he still has, he's done some offsets, but there's still offsets to accomplish, so to speak. And then on top of that, there is, there will be a need, it looks like this fall, if the numbers stay what they are now or get higher, I believe there'll be a need for two elementary teachers, so that will tack on another $120,000, I believe. So there was some discussion about these, some of the, you know, budgetary issues in depth, and otherwise, I think that's kind of it. But, yeah, that's it, I think, so, yeah. Let me see how that works out.
Okay, Anne?
Yeah, I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay, Bill?
So, for the TBC Building Commission, very short meeting, the only thing of question was if and when they're going to get involved in the review or the upgrade of the community center.
Okay.
So they were just kind of talking about whether or not they were going to be tasked with anything on that.
Okay, I'm not sure. That, that'd be a good question, though. But that's it?
That's it.
Okay, moving on to First Selectment's report. Our hearts go out to all the families that were touched by the tragedy in Texas last week, and the concerns some members of the community brought forward about, about our facilities here. Next, a week from tomorrow, the Police Commission will be holding a meeting where they're going to discuss, you know, school safety and security. They're not going to obviously detail anything regarding plans that are, or the implementation of plans, or what's involved and so forth like that, but they're going to talk about the fact that, you know, basically, our police department and school security are up to date with the most current type of, you know, how to react to a situation and so forth like that. So that is going to be discussed. They're going to stream it on YouTube, so that's a week from tomorrow at their six o'clock meeting, and I won't say anything more than that, because we'll leave that for the police chief and the Police Commission to deal. The American Rescue Plan, which we've allocated a lot of funds for, the form to fill out when you pick up your, when you contact here, call and arrange for when you're going to pick up the funds that you've had allocated to your, your group in advance, and then when you come in, they'll be ready for you, and the form will be there. So that's ready to start being distributed. So in good shape there. Demolition is sort of underway up at the north end of town for the, the gas station and, and Starlet Motel. They're in the process, you know, they don't start knocking it down the first day, they, you know, the demolition is a process, getting everything out, so they're doing that. I attended our Zoom meeting on Route 161 corridor study, which will take into consideration upgrades and improvements to 161, aside from what's going to happen at that intersection with Route 17, with Exit 74, but from the high school down to 156, just looked at for enhancing pedestrian safety, vehicular safety, and bicycle safety. And, you know, there's going to be a website that, and they're going to be sending me some information where I'll be able to post it on my page, and we'll have it posted on town's webpage. In the fall, in October, there's going to be a public hearing where they'll invite people to probably, it'll probably be at the high school, a date to be determined, to talk about what's going to be done and what their looks at. You know, possibly sidewalks extending down by Gorton Pond, and this will be, they said it'll be done by 2023, the study will be, not the improvements, but at least it's on the, on their radar for the state. They have a contractor who's going to be doing this, so they've been really good. As we know, the budget referendum passed, so we took a lot of actions tonight to deal with some of that as well, so we fortunately got that done. The sad thing is, only 4.5% of the electorate voted in that, and I think that goes in hand, hand what Mr. O'Connell said about, you know, having a charter revision possibly done at a referendum. If you've got 13 or 14%, all those, that year of work goes out the window, so that's something we'll discuss. COVID, I talked to, let's say, Mr. Mans, Steve Mans, who's on vacation, but I talked to a rep. Hospitalizations are coming down, they're down over the last seven days by 47, and the positivity rate is still a little over 10, but it's down from 14%. So it's getting better, they're, you know, feel people are being responsible and so forth. McCooks, now, if you're going to go to McCooks on weekends, you have to have a pass, they are selling them at Parks and Rec, and starting on the 16th of this month, you'll need them every day. And this was a very busy weekend at the, at the beach. It was in the paper, one of our off-duty police officers happened to be noticing some crime occurring in one of the CVSs, and you can see where several arrests were made and so forth like that, so bravo to the police that were quick, and she, she noticed what was going on and took quick action, got the help of our officers, and made a, you know, an arrest, so great job by them. Amtrak fence, right now, they still have not come to a decision, but before they, or an installation date, but we will be contacted to be part of the solution. So that's, you know, they did say that when they delayed it, it would probably be fall before they were ready to move forward. The composting garbage cans that I mentioned about with possibly the NIPS, Dave Putnam will, and Joe Burgal will probably bring forward a proposal to put a few of those out. They're about $6,000 apiece, and I'll explain all the details for them, but they compost it, it's a whole lot better than what we have on Main Street now, but I'll let them come in to do that. Anne attended with me, we had a emergency management drill, and Army from the day did a very nice article on that. It's a great facility that we have at the new police, police station for the emergency management center. And Julie Wilson and the chief did a great job of having it set up from where it used to be, on the second floor of the dispatch center, the north end of town. This is a fantastic place and a great resource, too. We basically simulated a category three hurricane hitting southeast Connecticut, which would not be fun to do. But it was just well-prepared and a lot of positive feedback on that. This, a couple weeks ago, they had a 5K, the Azzagachi Nature Preserve, had an initial 5K run to raise funds. They were hoping for 50 to 60 people, they had over 150. So a really good turnout for a very good cause, so that organization, great job by them. The Vintage Market was last Saturday, it was cloudy, but there was a really good turnout, good for the merchants in downtown Niantic, it was fun for a lot of people. They had those dudes donuts, which are, they cook, they bake, they fry them right there, the apple cinnamon donuts that are hot, and I may have tried one or two or more than that. Congratulations to the girls' lacrosse team, they won the ECC championship with a win over Stonington last week, great job by them, great job. The last thing, we all remember, you know, the coyote from the Roadrunner show. Well, we obviously have a lot of coyotes and a lot of concerns. We'll talk more about this, and at the next meeting, I've asked our ACO, our animal control officer, to come in and talk a little bit about it. It's not under the purview of him, but he does, their office does know what, you know, are familiar with the coyote. So, DEEP is Department of Emergency Management, DEEP is the one that would take care of the wildlife and that, but they're not going to send a representative. One of the things that was pointed out to me today when I talked to DEEP and then talked to Rob Yeknik, our ACO, is they're very territorial. If we did remove one, another one will move in. It's not as if there's just one or two. Everyone says, oh, I saw the coyote. There's not a coyote, there are coyotes, and they, this, it also never approached, never leave food out. You know, if you see one, just try to avoid it. For the most part, we haven't heard of any, the chief said they've had no complaints of anybody being approached by a coyote in an aggressive manner or anything like that. People mentioned about trapping him, which you'd need permission from the landowner and so forth like that to do that, but if they're trapped, they are not relocated because of their, carry rabies and that. Rob said that they'd be euthanized, so obviously that's something that we wouldn't want to see done either. You know, this is their habitat and that, so. But here again, too, if you see one and it looks ill or not acting right, you know, wandering around or, you know, just looks, contact the police, because that's something they would take care of and so forth like that. But don't be surprised that they are not nocturnal anymore, they're, you'll see them during the days, as you will with foxes. So they're, and some people said they might be, they think that they're living in some abandoned homes. Apparently, and DEEP said this to me, too, and Rob said this, they don't like living indoors, they like being outside. So, you know, but anyway, more to that to follow, and, you know, so that's my report on coyotes. Any questions for me?
Yes, the police briefing and overview on security, you said that's going to be on YouTube. How will that be advertised to the public so they know to tune in?
It's going to be on there, it's, it's going to be on the public TV site, it's going to be put on the, I'm going to post it on my page as well, it's going to be on the public safety page, and I have a hunch, since we have a day reporter here today, it might be in the New London Day at some point in time, too, so I think that's the best way to get the word out, too. And here again, it'll be streamed live, so people can watch it from home.
Is that just something people can attend and?
They could, they can, they could attend it as well. It'll be here, but, you know, yeah.
Thank you.
So, any other questions for me? Public comment? Anyone who'd like to address us? Okay, seeing none, I will take a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing Hathaway Farms and the unaffiliated, under potential matters, unaffiliated employees compensation.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are in executive session, so.
Okay, so, okay. Our board entered into executive session at 8:35, we've returned at 9:53 PM, and no formal votes were taken.
Okay, the next thing we have to take up is the action on the unaffiliated employees compensation. Is there a motion?
Yes, move to approve the fiscal year 2022-23 unaffiliated employees compensation package.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will abstain since I am one of those people, so.
Okay, all right.
So motion passes.
Yes.
The last motion of the evening.
Okay, motion to adjourn the regular meeting of June 1, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.